Shreveport City Council has not been called to order. We have invocation by Councilman Fleury and Councilman Everson will lead us in prayer. I mean, in the pledge.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, Son of God, we pray now for mercy. We pray, God, forgiveness of our sins. Bless our city, our staff, our mayor, and the City Council as we lead forth making decisions. Lord, give us wisdom and knowledge, for it is in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Fleury, if you can call a row, please.
Councilman Bradford.
Present.
Councilman Everson.
Here.
Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
Councilman Fleury.
Present.
Councilman Wondell.
And Councilman Hall.
Here. Tomorrow, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference on the 21st. Does any council member have any awards or recognitions to single guest? Seeing none, Madam Mayor.
I just have one announcement today and the others will be made tomorrow. I just wanted to remind council members, we have about, I think, four tickets left for the dinner tomorrow evening at the Shreveport Convention Center with the Walk-Ons, Independence Bowl kickoff. Coach Drew Brees will be the guest speaker. So we have about four tickets left.
Can I get two of those?
I'm sorry.
Can I get two of those? If there's no other council member.
If, right, we've had two requests already and whatever is left, we'll just pass those along.
Thank you very much. I'll just send that in if that works out.
Yes, sir.
I believe my wife should be available.
Okay.
We can probably make it tomorrow. We weren't sure if that schedule was being announced.
All right. Thank you. And of course, I have some appointments. We can get to that when you get to.
If you want to do that now so they can get back to their busy job, I have no problem with that. If no one else has a problem, good for me.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. At this time, we're going to ask the appointments if they would come up. We're going to start with the A and E Select Committee appointment that we wish to make. Mr. Christopher Coe, will you please come to the podium, Mr. Coe? Thank you so much. Mr. Coe, of course, comes to us from the legislation that we enacted recently where one of the members has to be a member of the Shreveport Chapter of the American.
Institute of Architects.
Absolutely. So he is the name submitted to my office and we've done our interviews with Mr. Coe and was very impressed with his knowledge and his willingness to commit. Mr. Coe, would you like to just kind of introduce yourself briefly?
My pleasure. Councilman Everson, nice to see you again. I'm building a house in his district. I'm born in Bossier, graduated from Kerr Elementary, Green Acres Junior High, Arlen High School, Louisiana Tech. I'm an architect. I got my master's degree from Yale University in 1987. I've been gone a while, but I've moved back. I'm building my home, but I already live here. I don't know why I waited so long to come back. I'm just incredibly happy to be back.
We're glad to have you back.
And to the mayor's point, I am a very active member in RAI here. In fact, I'm a fellow of the National American Institute of Architects. And in another city where I lived for very many years, I was on the Architecture and Engineering Selection Committee for the Los Angeles County Public Works Department, which did exactly the same as your committee, which was to make sure that the county at that time, in this case, you, the city, we, the city, are getting the most competent consultants, the best price, getting the best work, and hopefully the kind of work that's going to raise the level of design in our city.
Well, great. Well, I'm, I am familiar with Mr. Coe and very happy to see this appointment. This is a good, this is a good match of some great skills. I recently heard him do a presentation on sort of the, sort of the architectural history of Shreveport and then it went into some focuses of, into the house that he's, he's working on now. But, but I got to say, there was a slide in there that was so interesting and well-done. I took a picture of it from there and I've been meaning to contact you to get a copy of that slide. But certainly a good fit and glad to hear that you were there and looking forward to having you.
Glad to volunteer.
Work with us.
Glad to be here to get involved.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
No.
For Mr. Coe?
I think Mr. Fleury was on the board.
I'm sorry, Councilman Fleury.
Mr. Coe, thank you for the willingness to serve. Just clarification, you are current resident of the City of Shreveport?
I am. I live on Oakley, 803 Oakley, and I have a property at 940 College Street that hopefully by December and Christmas is going to be habitable again.
Well, again, thank you for the willingness to serve.
My pleasure.
Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Coe, thank you again for offering yourself to serve. Are you familiar with the A and E Committee to any extent to have ascertained some of the issues that have been going on over the last year or so?
Only the broadest in terms of what it aspires to do. We've been speaking with staff here about getting together with, individually with some of the head of the four agencies that are the ones who most need the services of architects and engineers and call on them often. So I can't speak to the specifics, but please educate me or perhaps we can have somebody else to educate me if something comes up.
I think you've become more familiar with it, but specifically, what do you think you can offer this committee that, from your experiences?
No, I appreciate it. It's a good question. You know, I've been an architect for 40 years and so I regularly have to hire engineers as our consultants for very huge, multi-billion dollar projects. So I know what to look for in a good engineer. I know how to make sure that they are competent, well-educated, well-trained, have the proper experience, the relevant experience, and know that they're going to give you the oversight that your project needs. Obviously, fee is always an issue. We always have to watch that. And then there's just a level of quality, general quality. And we often hire architects too to work with us in collaborations.
So how do you view guys who doesn't have that, that level of experience that some of the chronic submitters of applications, do you feel comfortable giving you guys opportunities?
It's, that is a very good question. I think that, and I, we haven't had this discussion, so please, I'm just spitballing here, but I do think there needs to be probably some, some meeting sessions among the department heads, the committee, because I think it would be good for us to find ways to encourage people who are architects and engineers to work very hard on their qualifications, but also I think it's important for us to sort of educate them on what the city's looking for. So I don't know if you guys do any kind of a public outreach to firms and literally describe to them, listen, this is what we need in a consultant. This is what we're expecting from you. Here's a standard RFQ or RFP. Let's go through it. You know, this is what this section means. This is what this section means. Here's how we weight the qualifications, right? Resume may be 10 percent, relevant work may be 40 percent. I think you have to help educate to the consultants that are applying so that you're going to get the best ones who indeed have been, who have applied and who are going to be selected.
Good, and I appreciate that response. But again, you know, your, your work is certainly to review and to scrutinize those applicants and the mayor makes, makes the final decision on those. But at the same time, there was, I'm just going to say this just to say it and maybe you can get your, maybe response or not response, but one of the issues that kept coming to me and I think some other councilmen, but they felt like that the, that the makeup of the board was more into utilizing some of the same people and not giving newbies an opportunity.
It's a common issue. And certainly in a city of this size versus a city of 17 million, that is going to happen.
Sure.
But again, I think doing some very clear and broad outreach to firms to let them know, we're not going to keep using the same people over and over again. Please be encouraged to resubmit or to submit. But then help them understand again what the goals of the city are so they know that they're submitting properly. We often would have criteria when the same old names, so to speak, came up. I mean, we often judged not just by the qualifications, but also what district the project happened to be in. And we did sometimes give favor to that. Like I said, that was a little bit different situation, it's a much bigger metropolitan area, but it's important to at least give that consideration and also what consultant happens to be in what district. Not just what district the project's in, but what consultant the district, the consultant, what district the consultant happens to be in.
Fantastic. Mr. Coe, with your attitude, I think you'll make, make a great addition to that committee. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions for this appointment?
If not, thank you, Mr. Coe, so much for being here today.
No, my pleasure and thank all of you for what you're doing.
All right. All right. Thank you so much. Right, and the next appointment, Mr. Patrick Furlong, Director of Engineering. Of course, most of you know Mr. Furlong. He stepped in back in September when Mr. Westerman became very, very ill and has continued working in his position since that time, keeping the projects going, trying to make sure that we were meeting deadlines that were very critical to our consent decree work as well as roadway improvement projects, as well as working very closely with our insurance department to ensure a lot of things that deal with restoration and, you know, just different projects, but he's worked his heart out. So we're going to be appointing him and we are going to be asking council members to confirm. So, Patrick?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, appreciate you hearing me and I appreciate y'all considering this confirmation. It's been an interesting eight, eight and a half months since Robert passed. I learned a lot working under Robert and all the people I worked under here at the city. I've been here about seven and a half years. I worked under Ron Norwood and Ali Mustafa and Barbara, Barbara Featherston was an assistant city engineer while I've been here. While I mention her, I would like to thank Barbara. She's been a huge resource and help through this process. I've always been able to rely on her and she's been a huge help. I grew up in Shreveport, born and raised here. I went to public schools and then I went down to Baton Rouge and graduated from LSU and worked for a consultant a little bit in Shreveport before I came to the city and here I am. That's really all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
I noticed you said Barbara was a big help. Is she a big help or she's like a boss pusher?
She's everything, you know? I mean, she's, she's got a lot of experience and I do lean on her a lot and I appreciate you, Barbara.
Councilman Fleury.
Mr. Furlong, before I start, I want you to understand I've not decided yes or no on your confirmation.
Yes, sir.
You're able to help me today with my questions that I have. My first question is, are you a resident of the City of Shreveport?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And could you give me a little bit about your customer service philosophy?
Sure. I try and help everybody out. That's, that's one of the things I like working at the city. It's not just engineering. It's mostly working with the citizens and I get every call you can imagine. You know how it is, you get the calls too. And I treat everybody the same. I try and help as much as I can, even if it's not my department. I help them as much as I can and get them in touch with the right person. I never just tell them to call somebody else. Always reach out to that other department for them if I need to. I believe I've helped a lot of happy customers. Hopefully, those are the people you never hear from.
Well, it's been said that engineering is part of the, whether it's true or not, but it's been told to me as a council member that the engineering department is very difficult to deal with, that you're too rigid. And I understand you got to follow rules, but I think it's important as we go forth. I assume you have got everybody on board in the engineering department, all your positions are filled?
We're working on that. If I'm confirmed, that will leave three vacancies for assistant city engineer and the mayor and I are working to fill those and we've, we're, we've made a lot of progress with that. But I mentioned that as we're going to be building our team. Those aren't the only vacancies. Others have been filled and have been filled recently. So we are building our team and which, you know, is a good thing. It's kind of start fresh and build it the way that it should be built. I like to think that we're, you know, very business friendly also. You mentioned that we could be difficult to work with. Something I've noticed in the past is that some people or some applicants aren't familiar with, with what we're looking for. And if they submit something to us, it might not have the information we're looking for. And we kick it back and that can be very frustrating for them and it's frustrating for us if we don't get that. So we're working to make everything as clear and as transparent as it can be and so everybody's informed of what engineering is looking for so that it can be done right the first time and it's quicker and simpler. And there's, there's no new policies or rules we're putting in place. We're just trying to put everything out there and get it more organized.
Are you familiar with the Taco Moreno project?
I'm very familiar.
And could you say perhaps that y'all were meddling when that was a state highway? You stuck your nose into something perhaps that you shouldn't have?
No, sir. We helped them tremendously.
The highway department said yes and you all said no.
Hmm.
Is that right?
I don't think so.
Okay. What about detention ponds?
Yes, sir.
The fire department out there on Barrett Road on a hill and you required them to put a detention pond. And the folks up on North Market at the donut place, you required them to put a detention pond. The detention ponds out in the Newcastle out there that had 12, and first thing, you've got two detention ponds as you drive in and they're going to be fighting mosquitoes all the rest of their life out there. Why are we so set on detention ponds?
Detentions required by ordinance. It's in chapter 34 of the code ordinances. It's not something that we pick and choose for certain people to build them or not. So it's not.
So you just do it all the way across the board, whether they need them or not?
Well, the intention of the detention pond is not necessarily, you know, if, if you're on a hill, it's not necessarily how it affects your site or your neighbor adjacent to you. The theory is that that water will be detained on site and everybody will have a detention pond. So all those little pockets of water will be held and it'll be a less, lesser impact further downstream and reduce flooding in that way. It's, it's the code of ordinances and that's something that we're trying to make more systematic with forms and applications. No new requirements. All the requirements are the same. They've been the same since I've been here. We're going to look at them with the master drainage plan. We're going to look at all, all of our ordinances as it relates to detention. I don't see any big changes, but while we're reviewing those, we're going to open it up to the community and see, see what kind of comments they have. We're going to look to other communities, see what they're doing. But we're pretty, what we're doing is pretty typical with what other communities do. And we do not pick and choose who that applies to.
Okay, and let me, final question. You know Angelina Jackson in the Human Resources?
Yes, sir.
And you know she has a lot of tools and ways to help you as you become manager city engineer. You recognize that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Fleury. Councilman Bradford?
Thank you. And certainly, I was reviewing your resume, Patrick, and you know, you've done a lot here in the city, but you haven't worked in any other municipalities to, I mean, you work for private entities, but not, not for governments.
That's correct.
Did you, was your ambition always to be Director of Engineering or?
No.
There was not your ambition?
I came here seven and a half years ago. The position I took was a good position at the time and, you know, wasn't really looking any further than that. You know, I, let me take that back. I did want to make a long career here. The move was a big move for me and I thought the city was someplace I could stay for a long time as a career, but I was not looking up the chain to see, you know, where, where can I go next, you know? I'm usually content in the position on that and things just happen naturally.
You know, and again, my observation of you has been you're pretty quiet, mild-mannered, you know, you don't do a lot of talking and you worked under two previous directors, is that right?
Yes, sir. Ron Norwood was the city engineer when I started here and then Robert Westerman.
What would you do different than what your predecessors have done? Is there any, is there any opportunities that you felt was not being applied that you feel like you could do to make things more functional?
Well, I think kind of what I mentioned before is just to get, as an assistant city engineer, I worked with developers a lot and, and water and sewer and streets as that was incorporated in development. Just getting, getting more applications and checklist-type applications, getting those creative, I think is going to be a big step for our department. And we're, we're about halfway there. We've had lots of forms completed and we're using them. And that's something that hasn't been done in the past. In the past, when stuff isn't in writing, it's, it's hard to do it the same every time. So we're, we're trying to, you know, follow the rules. You know, the engineers are here because not everything's black and white and we'll always have to use our judgment sometimes, but generally the rules are set and they should be the same for everybody and they should be known, known to everybody at the beginning.
So what do you feel is your strengths? Specifically, what two or three things you think you are stronger at than?
Well, one of my strengths is just being at the city for seven and a half years. That's, that's really not, that used to not be very long when I got here. Everybody had been here 25, 30 years. They're all gone. So somebody, somebody that's been here for seven years in our department, that's a good stat.
So you're senior guy now.
There's a few folks that have been around longer than me, but, but not many. And that's, that's a strength. You know, I'm, I'm willing to hear everybody out and work with them. So if you have an idea, a developer came to us with a new product two weeks ago, it was going to be cheaper and easier for them and we looked at it, you know, we considered it. But at the end of the meeting, they agreed that it shouldn't be used. And it wasn't us, they convinced them, it was just the conversation that we had. So, you know, it's not, it's not my way or the highway. You know, it, sometimes it has to be like that when it really gets down to it, but, but typically, I like to hear people out and try and, try and find the best solution.
Two other questions.
Yes, sir.
How many, how many staff would be under your supervision?
About 50.
About 50?
Yes, sir.
And again, your persona is sort of mild.
Yes.
You think you have or would gain the respect and the confidence of your support?
I think so. Right out of college, I went to work for Bean Stuyvesant. It was a dredging company. We did large-scale dredge projects. The dredge worked offshore from the beach and would pump sand onto the beach. And I was, you know, fresh out of college and I was supervising the beach crew, who the supervisor had been working there 60 years and had a college kid as his supervisor, a welding crew, the dredge crew. And these are all crews that had been there. It's kind of an offshore mentality. And I came in as a college kid and as their supervisor and I was able to, to work with them and I wouldn't say win them over, but we worked great together. You know, we, we felt each other out and that's what it takes. I mean, everybody's different. You just have to work with everybody and fill them out, you know? When you're the boss, you're the boss. You can't be everybody's friend, but, but you can respect them and work with them.
And a final question, Patrick, is sort of similar to what I asked you, Cole, in that you would have great influence on the A and E Committee recommendations.
Hmm.
And you've been at the table. Tell me, how, how do you view those that want opportunities, feel qualified, have good resumes, good, good applications, and yet they feel like the buddy system won't allow them opportunities? Are you open to utilizing and recommending people that could get in and get their feet on the ground and help them grow?
Sure. I'm willing to look at it, look at it fresh. I've served on the state A and E Committee for Capitol Outlet for two or three years. I'm familiar with the process. I'm new to the city's process of participating in two meetings, but I'm familiar with the process and I know all the applicants that submit and I'm very familiar with their work. I've been working with them for 12 years. So, you know, we, we review it on a number of things and there's, should be opportunity for everybody. There's, you know, each submittal's a new submittal.
Okay. When you say everybody, you, you being conscientious of diversity?
Of course, diversity. We, we look at a number of things. Fair share participation, how much work they've had in the past, their performance in the past. Just because somebody hasn't had any work doesn't necessarily qualify them to get, to get a job.
No, no, that's how I'm seeing it.
Right. But it's, it's a group of things that we look at and they're all, they're all considered and each job's so unique, you know? Each, each job is very different, very different types of work. So, yeah, I consider, start fresh at every submittal and consider everybody. Nobody, nobody's blackballed from the list.
Well, I don't want to use that term, but we still, I mean, the major projects going on right now is the consent decree work.
Yes, sir.
What percentage of that work is still undone? 70%? 60%?
At least 70%.
In that area?
Well, I'm talking about the whole, the entire consent decree, phases one through five. We're wrapping up phase one right now.
Okay.
Phase two, the construction's kicking off. We're currently designing phase three. So it's, it's going to be ongoing.
So that's, so that's.
That's the bulk of the, the work that's going to be coming through our department.
And so there'd be a lot of opportunities within that parameter?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Jenkins?
Certainly, it's always hard to answer when somebody asks you what do you think your strengths are, but I'll give you two that I appreciate. You're very responsive and very detailed. And for somebody that often finds myself having to answer the questions of the constituents, you know, you give me a lot more information than sometimes I get otherwise and I appreciate that. You know, I spent a little time in organizations managing a lot of people and everybody's got a different leadership style. I think you're, seem to be effective. And, you know, I just encourage you, you know, to keep exercising the authority you have or that you will have in the new position. And then, you know, the questions up here, obviously, we sit here very focused on moving our city forward and obviously there's been a lot out there about, you know, us hampering the ability to grow our city. And that's reality. How everybody approaches that and what the solution is very different, but, you know, that's certainly something that's been in the forefront of a lot of our minds. So, yes, maybe somebody seen, or one of us or a few of us are maybe more critical. We're just interested in moving this city forward. I just want to make sure you recognize that any criticism is a function of our commitment to the city and really we need to count on people willing to commit their time and energies to help us in that matter. So it's an important decision and our comments, in my opinion, up here are reflective of putting that prominence there on that position. So please take that in.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins. Councilman Everson?
Hey, Patrick. No, I would, it kind of reflects some of what Oliver said. I mean, I've known you a long time. I've always known you to be very hardworking and very smart. I mean, in, in other settings, you've always, even back in high school, you're always hardworking and smart and well-liked and, you know, I, I think that those are great qualities to have in an engineer.
Sure.
I recognize that one of the challenges of being the person that enforces the rules is that people who like to do what they want to do don't always like to be told what the rules are. I mean, I get there are never going to be a super smooth, I mean, there's always going to be a little bit of tension between the, the general public and people who enforce rules, you know? It would be any, any department. We have a thing on our agenda today to move forward with My Government Online, which is a program that I think will help with that. Are you familiar with that?
Very familiar.
Is that something you're?
I think that will take us light years ahead.
Yeah. Is that something that, that you're, I mean, you know, one of the things I think of is, you know, I think, well, you're young, you know, for this, for this job, but I mean, it's, I think that in a way that's a good thing. I mean, I think you can recruit people with some new energy, implement things like that. I mean, are there, are there anything like that that you kind of want to share just to kind of say, wait, what would your kind of take on it be? What would your hope to, what kind of mark do you hope to leave on the department kind What would your hope to, what kind of mark do you hope to leave on the department kind of thing?
Sure. As, as I mentioned before, we're going to be very active in building the department. And things were different thirty years ago. There was a lot, a very different structure. And we're still kind of, we still kind of have some of that same structure. We haven't restructured it to, to some degree. And we're still, but we're still trying to do more with less. So, you know, I'm, I'm not looking to do things the way they've always been done. I'm not looking to, to turn the card upside down and throw everybody off. But I'm looking to, to do it right, do it the easy way. And technology has a lot to do with that. GIS, it's, you know, we have a new GIS administrator. And what I want to focus on is, is to refocus on the foundation of that. Because there, there was a transition between paper and GIS and, and that happened. And it, it can be implemented better. And I think that's really building that foundation and doing the simple things with GIS, not looking at, at what we can't fund and what we can't do with it, but looking at what we can do with it. And there's a lot that we can do with it. And a lot of it, a lot of it has to do with document management. As, as simple as that is, we have just an extreme amount of paper in our office. And, and that paper is very important. And looking back in the past and finding a permit or finding how something was done, that's, that's very important. And a lot of it's hard to find. But with, with GIS and incorporate it, it can be geographically referenced. And, you know, you can just zoom in on a house and, and see is, is there an encroachment permit for this property, you know? And, and it, and it can be there. And that's, it's, it's a simple task, you know, it's a major task to get, to get everything done. But I think it can easily be organized and set up. And that's, that's what the simple task is. It's a big task, but it can be done. And once we get organized and set up, you know, just throughout the years, we can slowly build and, build and build. And then, and we'll have an even better system. With, with My Government Online, that's, that's very exciting. Everything will be quicker, transparent, all electronic. And, and we're, we're also incorporating some aspects of City Works with, with work orders right now. And that's mostly the water and sewer department. But, but engineering, particularly environmental, is, is working with that. This is minor, but it's something I want to do is just, right now, we send out a paper letter and then we scan it and, and then file it. And that, that process is pretty cumbersome. I, I want to change that process, just make it easy.
There are a lot of those little processes like that, though. And I appreciate.
I, I, I got a list of them.
And that GIS answer, you may not have known it, but, but I, as a, as a person who legislates, I love information in GIS format. It is just so helpful to me to see a lot of what we do in, in a spatial relationship where it is. That is just an incredibly helpful tool to me. And I was sad when we lost Jennifer. I know she went on to new opportunities, but I'm glad that we have a new GIS administrator and appreciate that. And also, just as a follow-up to another thing Oliver mentioned is that, good job answering what are understandably tough questions. This job has been vacant for a long time for a good reason. It's very important. And it's a very, you know, everyone's a little nervous about when, when it's filled, but you've done a good job answering the questions. And that's what, you know, it takes that sort of kind of calmness in the face of a lot of people asking questions. That, that's an important skill to have in this job. So thanks for answering this.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay. Just wanted to say thank you again. And I met, I met Patrick a long time ago. Well, when we first got our set a long time ago. We first, we had the flood over in South Shreveport.
Yeah, in 2015. You were.
Patrick was very informative. And I was kind of like a couple of us up here. I just thought Patrick was quiet, like me, I'm quiet. So I don't say much, but when I do, it's probably sometimes too much or some of the wrong thing that I do say. But I appreciate the conversations that we had then. And then today is probably the most I've heard you talk in, in those past three years.
I couldn't get out of it, you know?
Again, I just wanted to say I, I appreciate that. And I understand about being content in one place. But times change and things change, and so therefore, people have to move and change also. So again, thank you.
Yeah, I'm a, I thank you. I'm a fourth-generation Shreveport citizen. I'm looking to stay here for a long time. This is my home. I love it and appreciate y'all's consideration. And Mayor, thank you for the appointment.
Any other questions? All right, thank you all so much. I, I just want to echo one or two things. I've noticed Patrick up close for nine months now. And, you know, he's shown me that he's able to take on this responsibility. And his work ethic is second to none, in my opinion. Oftentimes, when I'm here at six fifty-five and seven, he's coming in the door also. So he works extremely hard and has that knowledge. And, and, you know, the thing that, that has impressed me is that he doesn't do those handshakes behind the scene. Like, you know, things have, we found things where there was nothing in writing and people just did the handshake. And we don't do that anymore. We try to make sure that we're doing it fair and transparent. And so we appreciate that. And with that said, we're going to ask Mr. Christopher Wilder, Superintendent of Solid Waste, if he will come forward at this time. And Mr. Wilder, of course, has been with us since 2004 and has done a great, great job. As many of you may recall, Ms. Fred Williams did retire this past week. And Mr. Wilder is the recommendation for this position. And I've also met with him and interviewed him and screened him. And I think he's the right person for this job. And we're awfully excited about this appointment. Okay, Mr. Wilder?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your appointment and your confidence in me. And I appreciate the council for giving this opportunity, for confirming me. My name is Chris Wilder. I'm retired military. I'm from South Carolina, but I made it my, this way here. When I came to Shreveport, I met my wife. And I fell in love with her and the city. And we've been here, I've been here now more off and on for about twenty-four years. For the last fourteen years, I've been working for the Public Works Department. I've been in Solid Waste and had a lot of different positions. Throughout the years, I've worked for Mike Woods. I've worked with Mike Woods and I've worked for him. I've worked with a few directors that have been through there. And I've come to learn to, learn a lot about what I'm doing and learned about, a lot about what's going on. And I feel like I have a little, a lot to offer. And I know that this job is a challenge because we touch a little, everybody in the city. But I'm looking forward to the challenge.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Wilder?
We have, well, first of all, you, you came from, what department are you, maintenance?
I'm a police officer, yes.
Councilman Flair?
Mr. Wilder?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for agreeing to serve in this position. I, I'd only ask a couple of questions. Are you currently a resident of the city of Shreveport?
Yes, I am.
And what is a little bit about your philosophy on customer service? Because this is where we get all, in my district in Southern Hills out there, District E, the folk love their garbage people. They give them gifts of Christmas time. They give them water, food, and cokes and things, because they love them. And this is the thing they tell me. And thanks to Mayor Tyler and the council, we were able to get them some money. But they love their people. And so what, what is your, give us a little sample of what you say about customer service?
Throughout my military career, I was there because I like to serve and I like what I do. The city of Shreveport, when you work for the city, the citizens are our, they are customers. Everything we do is to try to take care of citizens. In Solid Waste and basically in Public Works, we touch everybody. When we don't do what we're supposed to do, we hear about it. So our whole philosophy is trying to take care of the citizens. And customer service is our number-one job. When the mayor and I talked, she let me know that our first thing is that our job is to serve. And the serve is to get out there and do what the customers need us to do and try to take care of the ci, um, the city and keep the city clean. So customer service is our number-one job and is throughout the whole entire city.
Okay. Thank you again for your willingness to serve.
Yes, sir.
That's all for us, Mayor.
Councilman Rappel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me reference Councilman Jenkins' statement in that any question that I ask is not personal.
Yes, sir.
And that we try to ascertain information. But I will say, and I appreciate your, your comments previously because you've been there and you understand, I, I trust you understand. Because Solid Waste is one of the most challenging departments that I get responses from. They feel like they overworked and unappreciated. Do you feel that way?
At times, yes, sir.
Okay. So anyway, what I'm, what I'm trying to understand is, from your, from your, from your understanding, what percentage of the, of the workers, Solid Waste workers are full-time or versus not full-time?
Right now, we have, I can't give you the exact percentage, but we have quite a few people that are, we get from.
Agencies?
Yes, sir. And the reason for that is because it, it's hard to ascertain good people. Although people think we picking up trash and anybody can do that. But like you say, it's customer service. It has to be something that somebody want to do. We can't just hire somebody and bring them on and, you know, next thing you know, they don't like what they're doing or they get out and they do something at a customer's house or in some of the yard, and then we got a problem. So the biggest problem we have and the reason we have such a high percentage of people that are working for agencies is because it's hard to retain good people. You have to want to serve. And to do this job, it has to be something that you want to do. And we kept, right now, we have quite a few vacancies. And that right now is answered for the fact that we have quite a few problems picking up bulk. I know everybody's saying, you know, missed calls or bulk's been sitting on my yard or out in, out in my street for weeks. And sometime when you get a call line, you call the customer service and we give you a month out or whenever, something that says might be July before we can get to you. Somebody called and you telling you that they missed my bulk. And the problem is because we have about fifty-four vacancies right now. And we hire people or we bring people in, and the next week they leave. It has to be, it has to be a job and a good fit.
I mean, they leave because of the salary or what? What do you think, kind of working conditions?
For many reasons. Some of them leave for the salary. And I won't say, you can say conditions, but when we bring people in, we tell them what the job is, what it pays, and we tell them what the conditions are. Like I said, it has to be something you want to do, not just because you unemployed and you're looking for a check. Some of the people come in there and when they get there, they learn it's not, it's a little harder than what they think. It's hot. And sometime, like you say, it's thankless.
And, you know, again, I think it was Martin Luther King Jr. who said, you know, be the best at whatever you do. If you're a sweep-sweeper, sweep-sweeps like you, you know, painting portraits. And I'm saying, the fact, the reason I'm saying this, I had some guys come to me not too long ago because, I mean, no shows, you know, six-thirty in the morning, you, you got no shows and now you got to readjust your whole schedule. You understand that?
Yes, sir.
And I, and I knew Mr. Williams. Matter of fact, I think he was here since I was born almost anyway. But what do you see that you can do?
Nice try.
He was in fifty years at least. Don't you think so? But what do you see? Seriously, what, what do you, what do you, what would you do differently? I mean, I saw that as his department. And what do you see that you can do to enhance that, that department?
One of the big things everybody says is pay. The mayor right now, we, we got approved, the mayor put us in, and we got a five percent raise. That was a start.
Okay.
When you competing with the oil fields and you compete with things that's going on out right there, it's hard to hold on to people when you paying them what you paying them for what we doing. But also, you still got to look at the people. You can throw as much money as you want at somebody. If they're not into doing the job and it's something that they're not, their heart's not into, like we say, be serving. We can sit there and we can pay them fifteen, twenty dollars an hour. If they go out to somebody's house and they pick up the trash and they drop stuff on the street and they leave it because they really don't care, they're still not the type of people we want. So the thing is, is we try to treat our people right is the most important thing. Try to give them, make, letting them know that they matter. And the way, your people are the best asset you have. And how you treat them is what you're going to get out of them. But, you know, like I say, it's still going to be, at the end of the day, the job is still what it is. And we still got to do it. But we try to treat them with the respect that they deserve. Let them know what they're getting into and hopefully, we can retain some good people.
And, and I appreciate that. And again, I, I, I do what you do. I mean, I have people, and I value my people. My people are my assets, like you, like you said. But, but I'm really concerned about the, the percentage of un, non-full-time workers. And if agencies can give us good people and most, some of our engineers come, came from a company, we can't, we can't, we can't entice them to come and be a full-time person in the city?
We, when we put out that job, the main thing also is when you do that background check and you, we go through the, the things that we supposed to do before we hire them, that eliminates people.
Okay. But it doesn't, the agency doesn't go through that process?
Well, they do what, they do their check and they are responsible for them. But once they, before they become a member of the city of Shreveport, we do our extensive background check and the things we supposed to do. And I can't tell you that they're the same, the background check that they do or the things that they do. I can't say that they're the same checks that we do before we hire. So I don't know how they get to, you know, they get a certain number and we do. But we do a check. And the things, some of the people we've had, they just didn't make the check or they didn't pass the U analysis or something of that nature and we can't retain.
But that's, in your opinion, at this point, is not compromising our ability to collect solid waste?
Well, sir, I can't say that not retaining people is not compromising. But do we take a person that we don't trust, a person that we're going to question integrity and hire them so that we can have more people?
No, no, you can't violate the policy now.
But, I mean, that's what I'm saying. You say, I, so I can't say that, you know, we're not hiring them, we're not hiring them.
We're on target every week. What my question is not what you thought it was, I think. My question is, at the end of every week, have all the residents of Shreveport trash has been collected?
Oh, yes, sir. We pick, by the end of the week, we pick up all the trash.
Okay. Well, that's why I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to say again, your longevity at the city, being in the familiar area, I'm sure you've said if I was the director, I'd be doing this differently. I'd do that differently. And I'm on trust that you will be a great director and take care of your people and enhancing that department so that everybody, it's a win-win for your people, for the city, for the, for the residents, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Eberson?
Oh, this is, it, just kind of a continuation. I know it's a, it's a difficult task to hire. And I mean, I know that there are many other departments that struggle with, you know, certain jobs are just hard to fill.
Yes, sir.
I look forward to sometimes a new pair of eyes in a job. Sometimes can identify new opportunities, new structural changes, changes to hiring practices or policies that may help to be able to get the right people in there. So I just say, I hope that we can have a dialogue going forward about, you know, what, what maybe are, are there things that the council can do legislatively? Are there changes that are needed? If so, I think that's something that, you know, we want to be aware of so that we can make sure that we are fitting. You know, for instance, I think in the past, now it hasn't been as much recently that I recall, but maybe there haven't, I just wasn't as much a part of the conversation. But, but, you know, in the past, we did have some conversations kind of about like privatizing pickup and the pros and cons of that and how or when, you know? But one of the things I was curious about, just as y'all were just talking, is, you know, if there's any benefit to privatization of just the bulk? Like do the regular scheduled with employees, but then maybe look at bulk? And I'm not asking you to answer that now, but I'm just saying, you know, let's be thinking creatively about whatever solutions may exist, you know? The, the right ones aren't obvious or they'd be done already. So, you know, we just have to think it through. But I appreciate your willingness to be there. And it's always good to have a, a new pair of eyes that are looking for good solutions. And I like a lot of what you had to say today.
Thank you, sir.
One final question, and I'm going to look you straight in the eye and ask you that about, I saw two trucks that didn't have air in it. Would you leave them from over there, but that means we won't get the air putting, fixing those trucks over there?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Two trucks that didn't have air?
Two trash trucks?
Yes, sir. I'm just asking before you leave, can you look at trying to get it fixed?
Oh, sure. We, we don't usually send, normally before they leave the yard, if they have a problem with air, they turn around and come back. So we will check into that.
I just didn't want you to leave your own position and leave those two trucks there.
No, sir. We still, we still in the same area and we will take care of it.
All right. That's it, that's all I had, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions or comments?
Just want, if you can fix air conditioning. I've got a couple texts from Art Thompson over there. They think it's a little hot in here. So, you know, and I'm watching John Settle out there take off his coat and walk around. So we have real issues in here. I'm just kidding. Thanks for your service. Thanks for your service, you got a tough act to follow, but we're looking forward to what you said and, you know, certainly want to support our veterans and you're certainly bringing a style of leadership that is going to be very goal-oriented and I appreciate that.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wilder. Appreciate you. Okay, all right. Our next one and final one for today is Mr. Davis Smith. We're appointing him as Assistant City Engineer for trying to fill some of those gaps in our engineering department so that we can continue getting the work done. So, Mr. Smith, of course, comes to us as, as an engineer with a Bachelor's of Science in Engineering and he'll introduce himself and then you'll have an opportunity to ask him some questions. I did also screen and interview him as we do all the others and he's impressed me as someone with a servant's heart and with the knowledge we need to make this department the very best it can be and one of those young people that we're trying to sprout ourselves with that will certainly come up with those creative ideas and ways to get things done legally and ethically and fairly. Mr. Smith?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, very much, Madam Mayor, for this appointment. Chairman, Council, thank you all for this consideration. As stated, my name is David Smith. I'm from a small town in central Louisiana. I found myself at Louisiana Tech doing civil engineering, graduated there and came on to Shreveport where my now-wife is from, her family's here. I didn't envision myself staying here back in 2008, but here I am and it is home for me. I live on 515 Rock Hollow in University Terrace South. We just moved into that house from a small home on Ackard. So, I've, I've been immersed in the city for the past ten years, worked with a private consultant for, for eight of those years and have been here for the last two, which have been, have flown by, to be honest. As you're aware, we've, we've lost some Assistant City Engineers and Mr. Westerman himself. I've had the pleasure of working Mr. Westerman, Patrick, all the other engineers on, on our floor, as well as Ms. Barbara Featherston. Both Patrick and Barbara are strong leaders and I've appreciated their tutelage and I'm more than happy to be here. My father worked for the, for the Department of Agriculture and for the Department of Health and he taught me a lot about civil service and I think my work ethic and I've got, got enough brains to get, get the job done, so I'm glad to be here.
All right, questions?
Any questions?
Don't let me off easy.
I don't think that's fair now. I think Bradford or somebody got a guy.
Don't let me off easy.
Well, he had the benefit of listening to the other questions so he could make sure and say that he was aware of that and was very clear about that.
Well, I'd say, customer service, customer service is very important to us. We, we treat everyone the same. I get plenty of calls as, as everyone else and I try not to pass those on. I handle those as they come in and try to see them to a resolution. So, we pride ourselves in handling everybody's issues the same and making sure they get, they get taken care of.
I think by now Counselor Bradford has conjured up a question.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Smith. And your experience is, is several years, but your, your time at the city is only two years, is that right?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Moving up to this position, what do you, what do you see as some of the challenges that you face?
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't planning to be here, let's say, but when I came on with the city, I was looking for a long career and something, something that I could better my community and, and put my skills to use. Unfortunately, Autumn Promena has left and as of the first of the year, I took her position and it's been exciting ever since. I, it wasn't by, it wasn't by chance, I suppose, but I just look forward to taking some of her. Her demeanor was, was very calm and, and joyful and she always wanted to hear people out, let them express their, their concerns and then work to the best path of, of getting those resolved. So, here I am, I'm glad to be here and, and look forward to, of course, the consent decree is going to be our biggest challenge. And if there's anything I can do while I'm here, it's get consent decree itself done under time and budget and with great success and the betterment of the community. It's, it's been a long time coming. Not a lot of ribbons get cut for sewer and that, that may be, that may be why it's so far behind. But, we're gonna get those, we're gonna get that corrected in, in the best, most efficient way we can. And every day, we're, we're coming, we're conquering new obstacles, as small or as big as they may be. So, that's, that's my first goal. Secondary to that, well, I'm sorry, primary to that is taking care of the citizens, of course. The consent decree and then our water system is aging as well. We don't let all the money go to one place, so Ms. Barbara and Patrick are, you know, make sure that we put the money where it's, where it's going to do, do the most with the, as much as we can do. So, that's my goal.
I guess, and I feel you seem to be very anxious to, to get in there and get it done. But I have, I don't have, I have a question, Ms. Mayor. Can I, can I ask Patrick a question again?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I appreciate you, Mr. Smith.
No problem.
So, we threw at Mr. Smith.
Well, I was just gonna ask real quickly before your, so, so you were, I mean, you've been working on the consent decree projects, started under April and then when she, or Autumn, I'm sorry, I always mix that name up and I always felt bad about doing it and I did it every time I said her name. But she's, she's a great Assistant City Engineer. Appreciated all the work that she did, but when she left, so you, what you said, you kind of took over that role, meaning like sort of interim, you sort of stepped up?
Yes, sir.
And what I'm trying to clarify in my mind, I guess, is like, once, once you're, you know, say you're confirmed for this position, you'll be able to hire somebody that was in the role you were previously in, is that correct?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, great, great. Just wanted, because right now, you've really been handling kind of both roles and it's a lot of projects for one person.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
So, it's a good thing to know there'll be somebody else there doing the...
Thank you for acknowledging that. And I, I'm sure we're all aware, I mean, in the past year, we have, you know, with my appointment and others, we'll have changed all three Assistant City Engineers and the city engineer himself. So, quite the struggle to kind of keep up. Autumn, whether she knew it or not, did a good job of keeping me involved, although I was a project manager and had my own projects. She drug me to meetings and kept me, kept me listening to, to things that were going on. So, she gave me all of a, a month to get caught up before she took off and, you know, it's, it's been some struggle, there's no lie there, but I, I feel like I've, I've seen it, we've, we've been doing this, it's my job and, yeah, playing both roles can be difficult, but once the staff is set for the engineering department, I feel we'll be in a lot better place.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to, do you want to finish with him before you bring Patrick back up?
I have Counselor Flurry on and then I'll give Patrick this water first if he like it, because...
Mr. Smith, you said you were from a small central, town in central, you didn't name the name.
Well, lack of explanation, usually I've got to go through a couple of cities to get people there. The name of the town was Village of Hesmer in a Rose Parish, just five minutes outside of Marksville.
I know where it is.
Yeah.
I've been there.
That's me.
Can't you tell by the accent?
Hesmer.
Oh, okay, Hesmer. Okay. I was gonna say, Heflin, that's not far from here.
No.
Like our backyard. Okay, gotcha.
Can't you tell by the accent? He's still trying to lose the accent.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Smith.
And thank you, ma'am.
We look forward.
Thank you, counsel.
And while he's sitting, we'll bring Patrick up. I just want to say to the council members, you know, we've had, you know, some attrition and some losses in this department as well as in others, but the thing that I think that I'm most proud about is that they've all pulled together to make sure that the work got done and that we were serving. And so, we've had to sometimes pull double duty and all of us do that to make sure that people are served. But this department has really done a yeoman's job of doing it. So, I want to say thank you so much for, for all the hard work. Okay?
And that sort leads into my questions, my additional question in that. You, you say you now will be two or three Assistant Engineers, sure?
We, we have three assistants, one of Streets and Bridges, Water and Sewer, and then Drainage and Private Development.
Okay.
So, we have three. And so, we'll have, if I'm confirmed, we'll need three new assistants.
We'll need three new assistants?
David.
Oh, you're taking...
David would be one.
Okay.
Then my position. And then we have the gentleman over Streets and Bridges is, is moving this week.
So, how do you, how do you, you got it already in your mind, figured out how you're going to multitask these gentlemen to get this done?
Yes, sir. I mean, we, we've been multitasking and we've been handling it.
Okay.
It's, it's not easy, but we're getting it done. David, David's been, just for clarity, he's, he's been doing this position since January, since end of December. He's been doing a great job. And oddly enough, I had a meeting with somebody, you know, a little ten-minute meeting before the city council meeting about who's going to help out when the next Assistant City Engineer leaves. I just asked him if he's, if he's willing and able and ready to take on those interim duties until we hire somebody.
Right.
And we, I've taken applications, they're being sent to me for Assistant City Engineer. I've already gotten some qualified applicants.
Okay.
It closes on the 22nd of this month, so we're gonna, we're gonna...
So, you feel like in, in the next forty-five days, you, you will be having some candidates to bring on?
Absolutely.
Okay. And my, my major question, the reason I call you back up here is that, and I'm not going, I'm not going to, you know, on the, on the past in this sense, Mr. Westerman's untimely death left, left, left some challenges and it, it wasn't expressed, it wasn't expressed, but there were some unfinished and some pending situations. What's your position or your, what I'm saying, position as a, as a, as a mindset in bringing your assistants closer so that if something emergency happens, that the projects that are under your preview would be, would be a continual thing without any interference and any interruption? What's, what's your attitude about that?
Just, just for example, the, the Civil Engineer Board that's been working under me, I could leave tomorrow and he could do my job.
Okay.
That's the way it is. And, and just kind of like we mentioned, we're, we're a new group, we're a fresh group. Sometimes people in government like to be, keep it close to the chest and not, not help others out. I guess that feels they might advance their career, I don't know. But we, we really don't have that going on in our office and probably by necessity, I mean, with so many people gone, we're all, hey, do you know anything about this? Let's figure this out. And we're all just helping each other out. We're getting it done. So, there's, there's a lot of cross-training. And, and the gentleman that's leaving at the end of this week, we've, his guys know exactly what to do.
Great. And, and your expressions, and I think Counselor Bowman said it, that I never seen you talk this much and I never gleaned your, your totality of your, of your wealth of information and you seem to be pretty, pretty keen on that, but, but that's my management style. I, I'm not threatened by anybody. I, I, I want everybody to know what I know so that, you know, when I'm gone to a city council meeting, for instance, that everything keep going and not an interruption. And I think you would want that to happen in your absence.
Sure.
So, so, so I feel comfortable that, that, that y'all working together and...
We are.
There's no, there's no big eyes or I don't want you to know my job because I don't want you to try to take my job.
No. There's, there's, there's really no big egos, no...
You feel, you feel, and you guys been together for a minute, so you, you know each other.
We have.
So, is that, okay. I'll ask that later. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much. And, and by the way, Counselor Bradford, I'm glad you mentioned that in all of our departments, we're actually cross-training because we never know what's going to happen. You know, we cross-train from the mayor's desk down to make sure that citizens are served. If I walk out tomorrow, have an accident and don't make it, the city has to continue. So, we are doing that and we're doing more of it. And, and, you know, that's the way, that's the way you serve and that's the way an organization should work. We should always have people that are working together to make, to ensure that when one is not present, the work doesn't stop. Okay, with that said, those are the appointments. I appreciate, Mr. Chairman and council members for you allowing me the opportunity to bring those up first.
Yes, ma'am. Moving on to reports. Mr. Green, anybody have anything for Mr. Green, proper statement? Mr. Green, you have something? No. Just wanted to see you walk down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
You have a revenue collection plan for us tomorrow?
Mr. Crawford emailed that on the first of the month.
I'm slow on my emails, so. Mr. Bradford?
You'll have your bond forfeiture report before tomorrow. I just got it in my email.
And back to, we have no public hearing. Ms. Jones, again, we have any legislation to be added tomorrow?
Not that I am aware of. Mr. Thompson says no.
We have the following request to speak.
Rob Rusard. When I walk up here next time, David goes home, tell him to stop at T. Jim's and bring y'all back a paunt's or gog, right? T. Jim's is a wonderful place to buy Cajun food, right there by Marksville. My name is Rob Rusard. I live at 451 Santafer, 34 Louisiana. It's been a while since I've been up here to talk to y'all, but I am re-retired, so game on, you know? And I want to talk about the eight-to-zero vote that the MPC had on the, on the parking lot issue. I noticed that that was an eight-to, eight-to-zero vote, but I noticed from citizens that, who I side with on that issue, they said that the goals on page three are smarter growth development pattern, which includes preserving and supporting the character of stable residential neighborhoods. And they say that y'all should consider the support for stable neighborhoods. And in terms of policies, it says that they want y'all to concern yourselves with preserving and supporting the character of stable residential neighborhoods and to promote a walkable environment. I support those neighbors and everything they're saying in this document. What concerns me is that, Mr. Jenkins, that you're siding with the neighbors on this issue, but when we had the issue on the storage facility, two neighborhoods, Quirby's Golf Course Foundation and Shreveport Green said basically the same thing. They said basically the same thing. It's our neighborhood. We don't want this huge facility in our neighborhood for all the same reasons, but yet I think, again, y'all all should support the neighborhood. Because even though the MPC voted eight to nothing, it, it makes me wonder, if the MPC is voting eight to nothing for it, we got a terrible divide between what the MPC is saying and what all of our citizens and the city council is saying. Something's wrong there when you have that kind of a vote. And I know while I was sitting out in the audience, I caught that Oliver said, any criticism I make are an effort to move this city forward. And so, I want y'all to appreciate that any criticisms I make are for the same reason. And second, Jeff said that the rules, he's a rule follower. He said the ordinance in effect, the ordinances in effect on that storage facility could have, could have been followed and we wouldn't have that giant facility in our neighborhood. And I, and often, I pull this out of my pocket about Martin Luther King said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about the things that matter." All this stuff matters. Every time I come before you as a Neighborhood Association President, the largest in North Every time I come before you as a Neighborhood Association president, the largest in North Louisiana, it's because it matters what happens in Broadmoor. And it matters what happens behind the Superior Restaurant, because those are where people live. And if we forget at any moment that a city is made up of neighborhoods, then we're doomed to fail. We've got to start re-recognizing the importance of neighborhoods in everything we do.
Mr. Broussard, Fred, your three minutes is up.
And I'll be back. I'm re-retired, and we will continue this conversation tomorrow. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Your note was noted, and I have called you up.
Thank you very much. Tom Arseneau, 333 Texas Street, Suite 700, Shreveport 71101. I'll make a presentation tomorrow because I anticipate there will be more people here. Simply, can I get this on? Is it on? I will let you know that my client Superior Bar and Grill has been working diligently with the people who are directly affected by this project. We have made some major commitments that are not required by the ordinance and intend to follow those. The thing I want to point out to you is this is Montrose. Here, this is the property directly across Montrose from this application. And I want you to note that it goes almost exactly the same depth into the neighborhood that this application does. And it doesn't have all the amenities that Superior is planning to put into this parking lot. So I will make some more comments tomorrow. I have communicated with you. I think this is a good application, and we ask for your support tomorrow. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, you first.
Did you all speak to, who's that backyard? Is that Ms. Goodpastor? Who's that?
Ms. Goodpastor, one, and then Ms. the Hoseys.
The Hoseys. So both, the arrangements that you were talking about, you all spoke to them too? Those neighbors?
I have, the Goodpastors appear to be inalterably opposed no matter what we do unless Superior purchases their home, which Superior is not prepared to do. So I ran out of options there. I believe that we have done a huge amount of work to satisfy the concerns of the Hoseys, and I believe those concerns are satisfied.
Councilman Flair.
And Mr. Arseneau, a question to you is, we have 12 rules under the new UDC the council to look at. One of them is public safety. Have y'all had any more fights out there?
The only fight I'm aware of was cleared up immediately by the, by those people who were there, and it was not started by anyone that was affiliated with Superior. So occasionally, occasionally at restaurants, people lose their tempers and they create a ruckus.
I just asked a question. Have they had any more? I understand.
Not that I'm aware of. I'm actually not, I'm actually not a big patron of this particular restaurant, but they're a wonderful client.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
That's all we have, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman requests us to make a remark. And my remark is gonna, Mr. Broussard, I just want to say, you can come back up here. I want to say something to you. And when you reference the council and our responses to various items that come before us, and using some examples of MPC and, the only thing that we require of the entities that are supportive, the support components of this council, is that they do their job. Okay? They do their job. They have the resources to investigate various aspects of applications and follow their policies and procedures and bring a recommendation that they ascertain as to be what's consistent with their policies and their rules. This body will take those items under consideration, and that's where the debate come in at. And I would never criticize somebody for doing their job. If the vote came back six to zero, and those MPC members had the privilege of reviewing staff work, and they did their job, then that's a good thing. It should be unbiased and unmotivated by political aspirational aspects. The politics come into play here. Now, regardless of what you may feel, you know, and I think, I speak for the council, our votes are a reflection of what we feel is the best interest of the city. We don't always agree, but everybody's ascertaining and coming from a different life experience. And our life experiences what governs sometimes our attitude and our mind and our mindset. So it's no disrespect to any neighborhood. I mean, I believe in neighborhood integrity myself. It was in 1992 when my neighborhood, the Queensburg community, was declining gains and violence and drugs, I mean, and liquor stores was almost everywhere. And we took it to eradicate that element out of our community. So rather than speaking up, Martin Luther King said, you said it, okay, your life begin to end when you are silent about things that matter. We encourage speaking out on things that matter. But the problem is that, and I said this, and I said it a lot, is that we don't see things as they are, we see things as we are. And that's where, again, our, sometime our judgments come from, is how we see things. And we grow to see things through our life experiences. So we're gonna, you know, we're gonna decide on this matter, but I don't think it's fair to compare apples and oranges, like you did before. The storage facility versus this project is two different projects, and we see them differently, and we will probably see them differently as well. So I just wanted to say that there's no, in my opinion, there's no criticism of MPC for doing their job. And you can respond.
Well, I appreciate the lecture.
You went on a lecture today.
I disagree with you. I think decisions have been made on this council that are very political in nature. I believe that ordinances that were written were not followed, we deviated from them, we voted to change them with that storage facility. And I told y'all, I was never going to forget that vote. And I'm living to my word that I have not forgot it because of what I heard this gentleman tell us. Okay? So when I reference what a gentleman tells me, then all I ask is that the application be equal across the board. But I will not waver in my support with those neighbors, because that's what I said back when we had the vote on that storage facility, and it's the same thing I say today. You know, that I support the neighborhood. But we have a problem when the MPC is voting six to nothing, eight to nothing, I think is the actual vote. Okay? And then we come and we hear a different dialogue from our city council member. You know, I could give you a lot of examples. I don't think you're going to allow me the time to do so, I know. But you know I've got them. You know I've got them, Mr. Bradford. And when I quit standing up is when you put me in the grave. Because what happens in this city does matter. It's mattered for me my entire life in this city. I've had career changes because I stood up for what was right. And I will continue to stand up for what's right regardless of the political outcome. There are a lot of people ask me to run for city council District C, a lot. And I'm considering it. But let me assure you that if I was to run and be elected for city council District C, that road improvement repairs would be district-wide. They would not be isolated to one or two little neighborhoods. That when we talk about budget, the budget items would be shared equally around the city.
Let me just, and I have to interrupt because all we're agreeing on is that you would never get a challenge from me of you having the right to speak whatever you think you ought to speak on.
Thank you.
That's your right, and I would support it 100%. But I'm also going to say that when we talk about legislation and talk about moving this city, we have seven members of this council that are here to legislate, and we caucus and talk and talk and try to reach a consensus. But that's how business is done, and we take care of business. You can choose to do what you feel politically.
Sure.
And good luck to you, but I don't think this forum is the proper forum for you to...
To do what?
To talk about what you will not do if you ever get elected.
You challenged me with some comments and lectured me, and I'm not going to stand here and let you lecture down to me.
No, I didn't, I didn't, I did not, I told you that the process of getting legislation passed stands on its own merits. There's no one-size-fits-all, Mr. Broussard. And I welcome your candidacy and good luck to you, but I think once you...
I haven't said I was running yet, Mr. Bradford.
Well, you said 100 people in Congress.
There are a lot of people.
Anyway, Mr. Chairman, I yield. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, sir.
I'd be glad to answer them.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford.
Thank you, sir.
We were exactly, that was the most sincere... You won't be surprised.
That was the most sincere, I know, that I've ever heard anyone say.
No items under consideration. Ms. Jones, let's continue with items to be adopted.
Yes, sir. Resolution 76, authorizing Cachada Bank Share, Inc. at 9391 LRB Road to make a connection to the City of Shreveport's water and/or sewer system. Resolution 77, authorizing Vincent Norman Gallegos at 5557 Jefferson Page Road to make a connection to the City of Shreveport's water and sewer system. Resolution 78, authorizing Enable Midstream Partners LLC, represented by John L. Miller, Facilities Coordinator at 7207 Brooks Road, to make a connection to the City of Shreveport's water and/or sewer system. Resolution 79, authorizing the mayor to accept a monetary donation of $75,000 from Judah and Astrid Hertz to the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, to be utilized by the Shreveport Parks and Recreation Department for Project Swim.
No questions?
There was some questions regarding number 78. Are we clear? I'm sorry, 79, of this coming before the council for approval, that's the process?
Yes, sir. I follow the ordinance, and so anything over $10,000 should come to the council, and that's what I'm doing. Okay?
Is someone here for Enable today, Midstream? Mr. Miller? Okay.
Counting on it.
Okay, that's fine.
Ms. Crawford, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Jones, please continue.
Yes, sir. Resolution 73, selecting the Times as the official journal for the City of Shreveport for the period commenced in July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019. Resolution 74, authorizing an amendment to the agreement authorized by ordinance 46 of 2010. Resolution 80, authorizing the waiver of permits and inspection fees for Renaissance Neighborhood Development Corporation's Embassy project.
And Councilman Zinkin?
Just to go a little background on Resolution 80. So the VOA, in conjunction with several programs after Hurricane Katrina, purchased this property from a, you know, it's a resident, it's an apartment complex, and it was, you know, helped with some relocation issues as well as potentially transitioning it into a home for veterans as they transition out of some of their other veterans' homes. They are applying for a tax credit program from the state and federal government, and part of their application process adds weight to their application. They're hoping to get almost $2.7 million of tax credits. So this proposal here is one of the ways to add viability to their application. Though they have a lot of other things that include them, but these are one of the key things to move it forward. You know, is it, in a neighborhood in transition, absolutely the property desperately needs refurbishing? I think it's a great project, both to support what I think is a great group in our city and certainly want to give them all the tools they need to continue to do the good work that they're doing. Initial discussion at order of magnitude, what those fees would do, when I initially talked to Public Works, I gave them the wrong amount of investment capital. Some investment capital is about 2.7, as I said. So the fees could somewhere be in the $10,000 to $15,000 is the kind of fees that we're talking about waiving potentially depending on the development. Very similar to what I believe we did for Brentwood, or if I'm saying...
Similar, a little different. That was a restoration tax payment.
Yeah. Okay, sorry. But anyway, I will say under, broadly, not necessarily the same program. Anyway.
It's more similar to what we have in downtown. We do a waiver of buildings in the traditional downtown. We waive, like for historic buildings, they waive bar met fees.
Yeah, but...
It's like an ongoing incentive.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, my point is, it's not a dissimilar something to what we've done in the past. Okay, so I'm asking for your support of it, and happy to provide any additional...
Which complex is it again? Is it the one that's right there off of East Washington?
No, it's right behind where the McDonald's is, I believe. So we're at the church, you go east one block and it takes up most of the...
I know exactly the one you're talking about.
Forty-one some odd units and...
And it's called the Embassy or something now?
Yes.
Is that what it's called? Okay.
Correct.
All right. Ms. Jones, please continue.
Resolution 81, authorizing the submission of a 2018 annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Resolution 82, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with South Central Planning and Development Commission for the use of the MyGovernment Online Software Solution and other related software to execute any and all related future documents and/or CEAs with SCPDC to carry out the intention of this resolution.
83?
83, authorizing the mayor and to execute an act of correction to a cash sale deed to include a waiver of the city's rights to enter or use a surface of the property for any purpose related to the reservation of mineral rights.
Just one comment. I'm assuming that the city attorney's office has reviewed or agrees with this correction in here. I know, I saw Karen on the thing, but I'm assuming that, you know, since the actual deed isn't on the document, or at least I didn't see it, it may be somewhere. But anyway, if it's a positive thing, I'm all for it.
It is. It allows that parcel to be developed. Right now, it would not be. It's a small portion of land, and we still are reserving those mineral rights, so that we were comfortable with this legislation.
Thank you.
And just to add to it, I think this was a correction from what year?
2009.
2009, okay. Just want to make sure that you understand that correction is being made from 2009.
Councilman Evans?
Just wanted to thank the administration for following up on the MyGovernment Online. You know, they've been looking into that further for a while now. I was able to go to one of their early presentations about it. I mentioned it earlier. I've been very impressed with what it's capable of, and I think it could be a really good tool for our city, particularly for not just organizing information, but also for making it accessible to those very same people who sometimes, you know, are frustrated with the current process. So I think it makes things more transparent and open for them. Also helps us to make sure that it's a new tool for us to use to be able to keep track up and express what's going on and... keep track of and express what's going on in various, you know, through permitting and property standards and things like that. So, great tool, really appreciate the forward thinking of looking, of, you know, looking at that strongly, and hope to expect the council's support on that.
Ms. Chu. Mayor, I didn't know you was high-tech.
Remember, I'm an educator. We have to adapt.
How long do you think it's gonna take to launch that?
I'm sorry?
How long do you think it will take you to launch it?
Well, I'd have to ask Mr. Santos that. He's the expert that we hire.
She may be high-tech, but not in the integration team itself.
The current deployment is about six months, and when we deploy it, we're not going to immediately convert all the data from the existing system. We're gonna go in with the new system, so we preset it up the way it needs to be, and then, once we go live, which will be about six months, then we'll start converting all the old data to match, to go into the new system.
So, you think that might be eight months before generally in place, or...
Well, we're waiting for this cooperative agreement, and the reason we're having a cooperative agreement on this is because this solution is provided by a, it's called the Southwest, South Central Planning and Development Commission. It's like, it's like an NOCOG, so it's, in Terrebonne Parish, it's their NOCOG. And since they provide the solution, we have to have a cooperative agreement, and so that's why we're not purchasing it like through a private company, and that's why there's a significant cost advantage to this. We've been sitting on an old permitting application for years and years, because to upgrade and get a professional services to get to that next level has been, it was gonna be about $1.3 million, and every time we had the discussion, we didn't have the money. So, we've been sitting here, sitting here, waiting, trying to figure out a solution. And then, once we came across MyGovernment Online, we realized we have a solution that not only will offer us a lot of features, we'll actually be able to implement the mobile inspections, we'll actually have citizens or contractors who will be able to go online, submit their plans online, do online review, make payments online, check the status of some, so if somebody has a question about, even the councilman, the status of a permit, you can actually log on and check the status yourself. And so, this solution is actually cheaper. Right now, we're slated to pay $104,000 just for maintenance on the current solution that we have, and that's not getting any improvements. And so, it's about $89,000 a year to go to this solution.
I think, and I'm sorry to cut in, I hope I'm not talking over you, but I think what Councilman Flory was kind of trying to understand is like, so I think you were clear about that six-month startup process of like getting the system in place, but then, once that happens, and we start like actually making it what we're full-time using, how long does that process take? After that six months, but before it's kind of live for everyone else?
Well, after the six months, we'll be in production at six months, so at that point, we'll be actually...
Okay, so it will be, and that's what we just weren't quite clear on, is, you know, you said after the six months, you would start transferring the data, and we didn't know if that meant like that's something that happens right away, or if that kind of keeps on for a few months, or, but you're, so you're saying about six months should be when people could use it?
Six months from when we start, and so, of course, we're waiting on this agreement so we can start, but we're sitting there kind of ready to start as soon as we can get all the official agreements signed. And so, hopefully, we'll start the discovery phase immediately, once this agreement is signed, and then, from that point, it'd be about six months. So, now, we're looking probably January, February, somewhere in that timeframe.
Okay, great. Good.
Okay. Any other questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. Okay. All right. Ms. Fields?
All right. Ordinance 49, amending the 2018 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 50, amending the 2018 general fund budget. Ordinance 51, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor lease agreement of city-owned property located south of an adjacent 26235 North Lakeshore Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107 in Caddo Parish, to Deborah Ann Sharp and Rebecca Gil Sharp Stern for the purpose of less fees to maintain and improve the subject property. Said property is not needed for public purposes. Ordinance 52, to revise certain provisions in Chapter 38 of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances, specifically revising Section 38-61 relative to allowing the Director of Public Works or his/her designated to increase or decrease the required 25-foot buffer between developed and undeveloped tracts of acreage.
Okay. Any discussion, question?
I do on the ordinance about this buffer zone. Who is the actual, Public Works is making that, according to the document, appears they're the ones proposing this?
They are.
Okay, and, and I'll be frank, if it's in here, I have not looked into this very much, but have you had a reaction from MPC or any of these other bodies about this?
Mr. Norman, can you respond to that? I do not.
No, no, we haven't. Actually, what we're trying to do, there are times that we go out, and we're gonna have someone create a 25-foot buffer zone to get out, to find out, to do the topography of the land or something, that it's just not reasonable to get a full 25-foot. But there's other times that we have situations to where, to where maybe 25-foot is not enough, and we feel like that we need to get a little bit more of a buffer zone. You know, what we find is people like to hold us to the exact amount of the measurement of the 25-foot that we have in there now, so all we're trying to do is, on the times where we have circumstances that dictate maybe something a little different, whether it be a little less of a buffer zone or a little more of a buffer zone, you know, this is where, you know, what we're trying to do is get something that would give us the opportunity to make that decision.
And so, you know, I don't, you know, I'm not, I don't know how much overlap this is what we, that we have in UDC and other type of things, but if we haven't checked with them, I would encourage us to make sure they're...
Right, this, this is just for cutting, like, cutting grass, basically.
Oh, it's only for, I thought it was just a buffer zone in any undeveloped property.
No, no, sir. What this amounts to is at times, when you have a large tract of undeveloped property next to a developed tract, then what we, what we have to do is, or what we're allowed to do by ordinance is make them create a, you know, clear 25-foot buffer zone with cutting the grass or brush or whatever it may be, and all this is doing is just giving us an opportunity to...
Councilman Jenkins, a good example is over there, a fern extension.
Fern extension. I'm very familiar.
Yeah, so this helps to solve that problem.
Councilman Corv?
Councilman Jenkins asked, and Mr. Norman answered the question that I had.
Okay. Councilman Bradford?
Do you have a question for Mr. Norman?
No, I'm looking at, and I may be out of order here. What, 51 is that? Who could explain that?
I can speak to that. This piece of property is actually landlocked between privately-owned property and the lake. This was, there was an original lease on there that allowed some development to occur on there that was maintained by a private family. Since the flooding, that property has fallen into disrepair, the lease has expired, and they cannot get on to maintain and upgrade that property, I want to say upgrade, repair it. So, in agreement for the lease terms, they're going to actually maintain, cut that grass, keep it clean and neat around the property, and also repair those dilapidated buildings that face cross lake. So, this lease agreement will allow them to enter the property and do that. They cannot alienate it, it's only a lease, it doesn't allow them to do anything else other than maintain the property and repair those buildings that have fallen into disrepair.
I'm trying to recognize exactly where this is.
If you don't...
Is it on the...
It's on the north side of the lake.
South side of the 220?
I walked the property, it's actually on the north side of the lake, right before you get to Squirrel Point. So, if you're driving on North Lakeshore, drive down North Lakeshore, there is an entrance to, I think it's North Cross is the neighborhood? Okay. There's a street before that, that actually is a private drive, and it goes to the privately-owned land, and that land blocks the public land behind it, but if you're on the lakeside, if you're on the lake looking at it, you'll see a bunch of dilapidated buildings and a lot of torn-down boat piers and all of that, because it was improved on, but after the flooding, it was destroyed, so they want to be able to repair it.
Any approach as about this deal?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And Karen just pointed out, of course, Exhibit B, there's a map that may give you a little frame of reference.
Yeah, I would get the map. But I'll give us a question, but as long as it's not, it's not a, if they're trying to quiet, then we had to make it approach a different way.
No, they just want to lease it, just to do that.
Is that it?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Ms. Fields Jones?
Ordinance on second reading and final passage, ordinance 30, to establish the City of Shreveport Planning, Zoning, and Development Department, along with the accompanying boards and commissions, to assume the duties and responsibilities of the Shreveport Metropolitan Commission of Caddo Parish, its staff, and its ZBA as exercised within the city limits of Shreveport, to authorize and direct the city attorney to prepare the necessary ordinances and other legal documents, and to request the mayor to prepare the necessary organizational chart budgets and to hire personnel so that the Shreveport PZD department can be in operation January 1, 2019. Ordinance 44, amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2018, grant special revenue fund budget. Number 45, amending the 2018 capital improvements budget. 46, to revise and update Chapter 78 of the Code of Ordinances in regards to design guides for street pavement and private project inspection fees. Ordinance 48, an ordinance to close vehicular through traffic, a portion of Montrose Drive, between Line Avenue and Dillonham Avenue. Ordinance 36, zoning case number 15-18, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located 158 feet west of Jewella Avenue, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R17, single-family residential district, to C1, neighborhood commercial district. Ordinance 47, zoning case number C-23-18, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located between Drexel Drive and Montrose Drive, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R17, single-family residential district, to CUC Urban Corridor District.
Councilman Jenkins?
Number one, ordinance 36, are we...
36?
Do we know if we've got the, what we need to move forward? Isn't that the one with postponed hours?
Yeah, I felt bad for them.
Have we had any communication, Mr. Clerk, on intentions or attendance?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it says postpone May 22nd, but that wasn't the first time.
I think at our last meeting, she had asked the, asked this lady to be with neighbors, but we don't know if that's happened.
Yeah, well, if she finds out she isn't gonna be here, I'd be very curious to hear her intentions, just so we can move forward, or...
You want us to ask a question?
I think we need to just move forward on this anyway, instead of making the, making them just continue to hold out because of either the council member can't make it here or because of there is a conflict and, and conversations, so I think we need to just try to go ahead and move forward on it.
Yeah, I agree. I wouldn't mind to hear her sentiments.
Yeah, no, I'd like, I'd like to hear what she has to say, but I mean, I think they had a healthy discussion about it at their last meeting, and then, we've been able to hear, you know, at least a good portion of it. I mean, I'd like to hear what she wants to do, but I think it's kind of, it's a long time to be holding off a decision on, on something, unless there's a great reason. I mean, I'll change my mind if there's a good reason to...
No, it's not fair to the citizen.
Yeah, but that was number one of my... Okay, so, tomorrow, I'm gonna ask if we move ordinance 48 after ordinance 47, which I'm sure I don't need to explain the reason for that, and regardless how ordinance 47 goes, unless there's a strong requirement, I'm gonna probably postpone it, see kind of if we really need to do this now, and if whatever gets worked out, if then that alleviates some of that problem, if it doesn't, we'll just keep it on there and table it until we've had some time going forward, regardless of how the situation resolves itself.
Is that ordinance 47 that you may postpone?
Forty-eight. Forty-eight. I want 48 to come after 47, and I'm gonna ask to postpone 48 in all. Okay. Okay, so, you know, talk briefly about 47. Certainly appreciate the Constitution and rights of freedom of speech. It's unfortunate there was no real requirement of the accuracy of those comments, or, you know, just opinions in this, you know, what he construes this policy, what have you. But anyway, the, I think for, in order to be consistent, you know, some points need to be out there. I think one thing we as a council have put certainly more weight on adjacent properties to the change in zone. In case of the storage facility, obviously, other than the golf course itself, there really wasn't any adjacent property owner, other than the one who was supportive of it. So, I think there's a pretty big distinguish, kind of, in terms of, you know, history and what have you. That being said, you know, as I mentioned last time, I really do hope that the adjacent property owners are given consideration. I look forward to hearing, you know, from them tomorrow if they plan to attend. I do appreciate certainly Mr. Arsenault getting involved, because he has helped move this project, at least found some common ground with some of the neighbors, and that's been very helpful. But that's kind of where we are on that, and I do think maybe a little premature on closing off the street, given where the discussion is at this moment.
All right. Councilman Evans?
I just want to take this opportunity again to thank everybody for your support, and thank the mayor for being quick with matching resources to opportunities for the capital budget amendment for the Triple Common Park. You know, it would be a shame to kind of just put this money in a, in an envelope to send back to the EDA, but it is great to put it towards a project that has been a high priority of a very diverse group of people working towards finding these resources for quite some time now. So, you know, I'm, I'm excited that it will be, you know, also the timing, because it's coming in where we are making real strides with, with successful implementation of the HUD Choice Neighborhoods Plan that we've had, and then, we are, of course, a finalist in the application for an implementation grant from HUD. You know, to see things like that going on in this area that long-sought disinvestment not only gets us a more active, useful, vibrant city core that we all kind of want for various reasons and from different perspectives, but also it sets a stage and shows, you know, that we can work together, we can get these things done, these goals are not insurmountable. You know, we can take parts of the city that have largely gone empty, and with some effort and creativity, and by listening to each other and hearing each other's priorities, find ways to fill them back up in, in different and valuable ways. And, you know, I think that for that reason, this is sure a great park, and I love, you know, an urban park of which we don't have really a lot of examples of something like this, so it is a unique asset for us. But over and above that, I think it really shows a good example of what we can continue to do when we all work together. So, appreciate everybody's support, and if anyone has any particular questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them, but sure look to see all of your supportive votes on that tomorrow.
Yes, sir. Yep. Ms. Tany?
In the table, it's listed to be removed from the table, okay? No, ma'am. We have no, we have, do we have one? We have one property standing up here.
And you are welcome to walk up if you want, but if not, I mean, I was really, I know that there are a number of us who've been trying to get in touch with, we've been receiving regular updates, but we don't have this last round of updates. I've not heard. I've called a couple other people who've been reaching out to this property owner as well, and I know that, at least what I've heard back so far is that others have not heard back. So, I don't know if there's, you know, if he's out of town, but I did see some people over there just today, still looking in the building. So, I'd like to just postpone it two weeks. I don't want to push this off a long time, but for whatever reason, we're just not getting the most current information. Are y'all comfortable with that, or do y'all have a different, do y'all know, do y'all know something? I don't. It would be... y'all know, do y'all know something? I don't. It would be fine. But if y'all are comfortable with that, I'd like to just postpone it to the next meeting, really.
Okay.
Is that good? Great?
Okay.
Yeah. Great.
Whoops, sorry. So eager to press yes, I couldn't.
Can't wait for the screen to get up. Thank you.
With six, the one absent.
Thank you. And that'll give us time to get those responses. I know that that new property, and I know this is the one that, you know, we had required them to sell it. That has happened. And the new property owner is getting estimates on the various things that need to be done to stabilize the building. So making progress, but we just need to get an update on the most recent.
All right. We have no ABO appeals today. There'll be one MPC appeal tomorrow. Are there any other appeals, Ms. Tanya? No? Are there any reports from Officer Corvus and Committee?
None. And how about a deputy clerk's report?
The clerk clerk.
Wait a minute, but...
I was trying to save everybody some time. The only report we have, the mayor's already brought up the, her appointments, and we don't have anything else on the report.
All right. Well, for time's sake, if there's nothing else, it's five.
Justice Chairman, I have to, I'm feeling compelled to ask the mayor or the chief, the meeting that the, that the parish commissioners called in response to the meeting that we had with the sheriff, are we, are we, are we involved to the extent that we're prepared to set some type of strategy for them to participate in the city, the city patrolling?
Well, and I'm gonna ask Deputy Chief Gooden if he will come up. We have been meeting with the Sheriff Department and was working on a proposed plan. Did not realize there were other issues from the parish commission's side of the house in terms of funding. Now we, as a city, and I need to say this, did not ask for funding because we're gonna redirect whatever funding necessary we need to redirect in order to make sure that we implement strategies to curb crime. But as I understand it, there will be another meeting by the parish commission, and we'll be in that meeting. Chief Crump was out last week and is out again today. But hopefully, if there's another meeting, we'll be there. And I'll ask Deputy Gooden to respond. He's been, he had been working with the Sheriff Department on a plan that we all talked about last month when we met, you, me, Chairman Bowman, the two commissioners. You remember, we had that meeting, that two-hour meeting.
Right.
And from there, they went and started working on the plan.
Who did?
The SPD and the Sheriff Department.
Okay. But it was, my concern was that if you recall, in the meeting, the commissioners, two of them who was there, committed to bring it forth to the parish commission.
Mm-hmm.
Some funding from that entity.
Yes.
To help subsidize the sheriff.
Yes, yes.
And they was prepared to offer that coming out of their special meeting.
Absolutely.
And they said they couldn't move forward because there was no police officer, Freeport Police present to give them the, the plan or the way in which to move forward. But there has been conversation.
That was, that was an inaccurate statement. Let me say that on the front. We have been working with the Sheriff Department on a plan. Deputy Gooden, can you give the update for me?
Absolutely. And just after, I think, the meeting that you were at, Councilman, and the mayor, and the chief, I was directed by Chief Crump as, I believe, my counterpart of the Sheriff's Office, Chief Deputy Jay Long, and we met pretty immediately, it was the following Monday, we actually met and sat down for a period and came up with some proposed plans to look at. We met again subsequently several days later, further discussed those plans with staff members that are under us. And then our staff members operationally also met a third time after that with some folks over at the Communication Center, the nine-one-one Communication Center. So absolutely, there were proposals in place there, and I think we've reached a juncture that pretty much, and I certainly can't speak for the Sheriff's Office, but I think we were ready to move forward with those whenever we got the final approvals.
Okay. And I appreciate that. I wasn't aware of that, but what I am trying to understand is that if these meetings took place, I mean, they did take place, you said.
They did.
And that my concern and my lobbying have been with the parish commissioners to support some funding in excess of a hundred thousand dollars to, to use as an incentive to the Caddo Parish Sheriff to get involved. And if that meeting was called for that purpose, and there has been conversation, and you was invited, why didn't you go?
Well, and you know, here again, Chief Crump was invited. He was out last week. He was not present. However, you know, some of us should have been there. But I think the focus of the meeting had to do with where the patrolling would take place from the Sheriff Department. That seemed to have been kind of the challenge that the parish commission because, in my understanding from the meeting we had, the two-hour meeting that we had with the sheriff and the others, they were to go back and develop a plan, and that's what they did. And apparently, somebody in the parish commission didn't like the plan. So then, when they called this meeting, you know, for people to show up, we didn't know they were calling the meeting to develop a plan because the plan had already been, you know, was in the making.
Oh, wow.
And so, you know, we erred in not sending somebody. The chief was not available. He was not, fact, he was not at work. But we erred in not sending somebody, but we were under the impression that the plan was gonna be presented to the sheriff, and the sheriff and the chief would sit and look at the plan, and then present that to the parish commission, and then they could decide whether or not they were going to fund it. That was our understanding. So that's where the breakdown...
I mean, that's the reasonable understanding. I don't know how the parish commission, who's not law enforcement personnel, could develop a plan.
Absolutely. And that was, that is, that was my thinking. But apparently, they felt like they needed to hear what the plan was and see if they were gonna fund it. Now, that's what...
Oh, hear what the plan was, not develop a plan, hear what the plan was.
I don't know. You just need to ask them then.
No, I haven't. And again, ma'am, I'm not, I mean, we're delaying what could have happened two weeks.
Absolutely.
Until they can meet again. But they was prepared to offer a resolution to provide funding for sheriff assistance in the city. They was prepared to do that and offer that, but they pulled it once. There was no, there was no representative from the city here, there at the meeting. But hopefully, we can, you know, before they meet again, and I believe they still committed to that, to that cause, that we can express what's best. You know, I think, I think he offered, the sheriff did say, it was seen, seemed to be advantageous for his deputies to patrol within the parameters of the outer cities because they're already in those areas anyway, and that to put, put resources of deputies within a certain demographics would be, would be reasonable. And, you know, and unless that changed, I thought that was what they would have considered.
That is what we talked about, Mr. Councilman. But let me, let me say this to you.
Okay.
Deputy Gooden came, and the committee was, was adjourned by the time he got there. But he sat in their meeting, and he could have come to the podium to talk about the various times that they had met and really was waiting to present the plan to the sheriff and to the commissioner, whomever. And it didn't come up again, I don't guess, because they didn't call him up. And so when I met back with him, it appeared that we were not interested in the plan, but we had already been working on the plan. And that's, and that's the breakdown right there. So, you know, be that as it may, we've made it very clear, and the chief made it very clear to Commissioner, who sent him the email to ask, to invite him to come, he made it clear, we would accept help from any law enforcement agency in any area of the city. So there was no pushback from SPD about, you know, whoever wanted to help wherever in the city. He sent that, and I don't know if that came out in, you know, in the meeting. However, we are working on strategies that we have put in place to curb the crime, and we're gonna continue to do that until the parish decides whether or not they're going to provide funding to the sheriff. And so they've said that they'll do another meeting, and we'll be there.
Okay.
We'll be at all the meetings, and we just, what I'd like to see us do is stop meeting and start executing on something. And so that's my take.
But you, but you do understand, though, that the fact that if it's to be supervised and under the jurisdiction of the city.
Yes.
Then the police chief or his representative should have made it clear to the parish commission what they are funding. Exactly. What, this is what you are funding.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, you know, I, I saw the email. It didn't ask us to bring a plan.
Okay.
That was not what the invite was about. So I think the breakdown occurred because we've got politics involved instead of us looking at what these people had done. They've been, they've been meeting, drafting a plan, okay? And, you know, we just thought that once the law enforcement agencies came together to draft a plan, they are the people, as you've said, Councilman Bradford, they're law enforcement. They know what, what to do, you know? But there was some discussion in the email that they thought a different type plan should have been developed. So, and I can share that email with you if you'd like.
I think that's, you know, that's past tense, but I think we're gonna move forward, but I, but I just hope that we don't lose that opportunity. I know you said that you was preparing to look at amending something to bring forth some other funding to this purpose, but I think we would be negligent if we did not pursue getting money from the parish to help us in this endeavor.
And we have done that. We have done that.
Okay.
We have done that. We continue to do that, and we are waiting for them to act and let us execute. Because we've been working with them.
Well, I saw the resolution. They're ready to act, but I think all they need to do is...
I think...
I have, I had some, some votes ready to, to, to support the, the funding.
Okay, all right.
So anyway, I...
Yeah. Well, whoever want to help, bring it on, and we'll be at the next meeting. Whatever meeting, when, however. If I have to go myself, I'm not in law enforcement, but we'll, we'll be there.
And I'm gonna use the terminology I used before. If I'm gonna pay the freight, and that's what the parish commission's saying, if I'm gonna pay the freight, at least I'll know what's on the train.
Absolutely, absolutely. If they had told us to bring a plan, we'd have the plan there, okay?
All right.
All right. Let's make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Court question, don't? Is our NBC director here? Five o'clock, sir?
Okay.
I'll ask my question. Thank you. So, again, is there nothing else outside of Councilman Flurb?
No, mayor answered mine. She answered mine, so I don't need to ask a question.
Sure.
No, yeah, she answered. I'm clear.
She's ready to answer again?
No, I don't need to answer yet.
Leave it on.
Right. Thank you.
I need, let me ask you. I can't believe I'm asking the guy on the other side, but I'm sure that you probably know the answer, and you will give me the truth whether this helps or hurts.